I live very close to Station 91 of 148th and Sterling. They're at my house in two minutes. This fight for me to get a real station out on the west side of town is because I know it's the best thing for the citizens. You get a storm, Mr. Mayor, you talked about a storm in the last newsletter. Said we were real close to having a storm. Those guys are leaving. They're going over to 148th and Sterling Road. There's not going to be anybody out there. What's that going to do to your response time? Okay? The volunteers don't do anything.
Barry, you've got to wrap it up.
Okay. They don't do anything. It's a fraudulent organization. Their names are fraud. What they do is fraud. Lee Bennett lies to everybody all the time. And that's, and it just needs to end. Do what you need to do for the citizens out west. Build a real station so the professionals can do their job.
Thank you.
Good evening. Chris Walton, 5100.
In the mic, so we can hear you.
Sorry. Chris Walton, 5100 Northwest 188th Avenue. I respectfully disagree with much of what's been said this evening. I believe that there is a spot for the volunteer fire department specifically. When I look at the numbers and you look at $262,000 a year being spent for two full-time members and two part-time fire chief officers, you compare that with $2.6 million being spent for an additional crew of three people with the town of Davie. The town of Davie's always had Station 91, Station 68. So I really struggle, especially as a west-side resident, paying that significant amount of money for an additional three firefighters with a truck to choose between two. The other thing that's of concern to me is the resources that are available, specifically water. When BSO was here, there was 2,500 gallons of water on wheels. Now, there's 1,250 with the Davie engine 112, and there's 1,000 with the new engine or the current engine 82. Water on the fire immediately is a very important component in firefighting. Without that water, our homes are at risk on the west side of this town. So I think not only today does the volunteers provide a huge resource, I think going forward they do. The other thing that concerns me, though, is that for the second time now, in 2015, the Davie Fire Rescue Department was censured by the U.S. Department of Justice concerning their treatment of their employees. This is of grave concern to me in inviting them into my home during an emergency. If it was the first time, that's one thing. Since the behavior has continued, it becomes concerning that we're utilizing a vendor that's doing this. I think that speaks volumes to needing to get a direction for where fire service is going to go in this town. You know, that's essentially what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live on 164th Terrace, and my son is one of those do-nothing volunteers. He trains all the new hires. He's been a firefighter for four years. He's a paramedic, and he's an EMT, all licensed, and he can save your life in a heartbeat, but Barry, don't call. I understand why perhaps some people might not get calls back from Chief Bennett or anybody else with an attitude. Our volunteers have always been here. We are much better today than we were when we had the little boxes by the bed and went off. My husband would jump in a suit and go over to Bill Lewis's house, get on a truck, and go to a fire. If we don't have a truck, they have cars, they have vehicles, they respond. My son left a Chili's dinner to go help put out a fire of an ambulance that was out west. So I'm thinking to myself, one gentleman was right. Maybe we don't need two fire departments, we need one. Maybe we don't need tax dollars to flow outside of Southwest Ranches, but to stay inside Southwest Ranches. And I applaud our volunteers, because you know what? I'm glad none of them are here, outside of maybe what's behind me, to hear what's been said. Because between you and me, they will always choose on the side of life, limb, and property. But there are some people, if I had to talk to my son in the next few minutes and he's at a training, I would say, "You know what, Matt? Skip it. I think you guys are doing a good job. I think you're paying attention to the volunteers, and I hope you don't pay too much attention to the negativity that I have felt from some of these people in this room." Because God bless them. If they ever need them, they'll be there. That's it. End of story. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hi, Gay.
Short and sweet. I'm a little offended by the do-nothing comment. I think if they stick with the facts, they like it or don't like it, that's fine. But these people are there when you need them. And I can remember back 50 years ago when we needed the volunteer fire department. And I'll tell you, if we ever get in a spot where we need more people, they're there for them. So, you know, I just think that we need these people, and they're part of this town, and so I support them. And that's why I support them. If that isn't good enough, so be it. But I can remember back when we had masks, when we backed the fire truck out, had masks in the building, and put the fire truck back in. So it's a history here. And the new people evidently are more concerned with the nickels and dimes. Thank you.
Thank you, Gay.
Bob Harden, 5441 Southwest 198th Terrace. You know, going to the country states meetings and the various meetings here, I've heard both sides of the story probably for a year now. And I'll make the same point when this came up last year. We talk about how expensive they are, how we can't afford this. I just did the numbers. The $262,000 for the staffing works out to be, based on all the residents in town, residents in town, about $104 a household, I think, if my numbers are right. That's a pretty cheap insurance policy, to make sure that there's somebody out west when we need them. If I have a heart attack and Davie's tied up, if a house goes on fire, car accident out there on 27, we have a lot of those. If the volunteers can be there before anybody else, because they are first responders, they paid the freight every single time, and to me, $104 is a drop in the bucket. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Debbie Green, 5201 Southwest 199th Avenue. I just, I want to agree with Bob. I was calculating the same thing. It's on the west side of town, you know, our lives aren't on the west side of town. They're worth exactly the same as everybody else's in this town. And when you had that fire study done and it came back, there was a deficiency out west. When you got it, entered into this contract with Davie, you entered into a contract for services with the understanding of a volunteer fire department. If you didn't have a volunteer fire department, that, those services would have been different. I'm just in support of the volunteer fire department. I just think it's important to have, if it is that one call that saves one life, or that one and a half call that saves a life, it's well worth $100 or whatever, you know, that small amount that it is.
Thank you, Debbie.
One other thing.
Sure.
And as far as the brush truck, and I know there was talk about maybe instead of a brush truck, that maybe it's more important to have a truck, and I don't know if that brush truck is, I believe it was capable of also holding the medical equipment that would be necessary, that there would be more life-saving equipment. And I know that, so, it just, I don't know if that's something to be considered as well.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, town manager. My name is Mary McAfee. I own property on 195th Terrace where my family currently resides. I'm here this evening due to the town's consideration, due to the town's consideration of the volunteer fire department. With the acknowledgement by the town through the town's newsletters of there being a delayed response time for the west side of Southwest Ranches, it's imperative that we have the volunteer department out west. We all know that time is of the essence in an emergency, and seconds matter in saving lives. Having the volunteer fire department out west will better the odds for our families. So I ask that you approve the expenditure of the volunteer fire department and any and all equipment that may be needed to give us the same odds as anybody else in the town of Southwest Ranches. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mary. You're only allowed to come up one time. Sorry. Any other additional public comment, Bob?
Bob Bush. It's only really, as far as I can see, one significant problem, and that's quick, fast EMS transportation in the far west of town. And so far, you've done nothing to solve that problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any other additional public comment? See no more public. John?
Good evening. Is this working? Okay. John Herring, 6001 Southwest 188th Avenue. I was on the volunteer fire department from about 2007 to about 2012. And in that time, it costed about $75,000 a year. At that point in time, after being there, I thought it was a waste of money at that time. Now, this is almost a half a million dollars a year, plus more and more and more expenses as it goes on, for two fire departments. We don't need it. Now, I consider it to be a criminal misuse of our money. As far as the medical goes, there's a big difference between ALS, BLS. The volunteer fire department does not and cannot provide advanced life support. They cannot do it. And they cannot provide transport. So when you're having your stroke and your heart attack, that is what you need. You do not need somebody with a backboard and Band-Aids. So you have a fiduciary responsibility to control our money in the best way you can. And as far as I'm concerned, you are not doing that. You are spending our money foolishly, and you're making a joke out of our town. Thank you.
And just for the record, it's not $500,000. It's $347,000, a $200,000 savings from last year. I just want to make sure that that was accurate for the record. Is there any other additional public comment? Michael?
Mike Hanley at 250th Place off of 205 Avenue. This is probably completely out of line, but why don't we make amends with Pembroke Pines and tear down those damn gates and let them come through and help us out in the west? There's a fire station down there on Sterling Road.
Any other public comment? See no further public comment. Public comment is now closed. Counsel, again, we have a motion in a second to approve. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, I think all of us represent all of the town that sit up here. But we all do live in different parts of the town, have different districts. And the area that I live in is out west. And so this particular issue is, is very important to me. And I've listened to the conversations tonight, the comments, and, and I appreciate sincerely the comments that were made on both sides of the argument. But I need to respond and, and make, make a few points on this. You know, from, from a general, and this may take a few minutes, Mayor, but, you know, generally speaking, from a, you know, a conservative fiscal standpoint, if my wife was here, I think she would vouch for the, for the point that I'm a pretty fiscal conservative guy. And so I don't look at this expenditure or any expenditure lightly. This expenditure is significant to the town. I think that's important to recognize. However, I think it's money well spent. And I'll tell you why I think it's money well spent. There's, in our town, and this has been talked about here through some of the, some of the comments that were made, but I want to be, I want to be clear about it. We have two fire stations in town. One is on, near Volunteer and Sterling, and then the other one is out west on Griffin at about 172nd. The one that is at, on Volunteer and Sterling has a full response there. It has two, two crews, five individuals, that they can, they can either all respond to something, they can split, they can take different vehicles, they can take the appropriate vehicle. One team goes, the other team can, can respond to a different issue. Out west on 172nd, that's not the case. We have what's called adaptive response. That means that there's one crew out there with only three individuals. So, so the, the coverage that's out west versus the coverage that's east is different. It's not comparable. Well, it may be comparable, but it's not the same. So, so that's, that's one issue that I think is important to understand, and to understand why it's important to have the volunteers out west. With the volunteers out west, now you have two crews out west, and as you have two crews on the east. A while back, we were talking about, and there was a number of discussions up here regarding different locations out west where it might make sense to move the volunteers to. The reason why we were looking to moving the volunteers out west is the most critical reason of all for having the volunteers in place. That is, that the response times out west are not comparable to the response times in the center of town or on the east side of town. For the last, for about six months, I've been getting the fire reports each month. And each month, I've been taking those fire reports, and I've been entering that information in a spreadsheet, because I thought someday we would be having this conversation. And I'm actually, I'm going to prepare a presentation. I want everybody to see this, because I don't, I think unless you see it, you, you don't really understand it. But what I've done is I've put together a grid for the town, and, you know, I'm a kind of a numbers and, and guy, so excuse me for that. But I put together a grid for the town, and basically what I did was I plotted all of the response times versus where they were in town. It's very significant, the difference in response times that you have in the center of town, which normally are between two to four minutes, and the response times that you see west of 195th, which average between six to eight minutes, sometimes longer. It's significantly different. The federal regulations indicate that you should have your first vehicle on site within four minutes. So we're outside that. Now, I'm not, I'm not throwing stones, okay? Don't get me wrong. I understand it's a challenge. I understand that there are physical things that are difficult to get around. But it's important, as a town, to do all that we can do to minimize those disadvantages that are on the west side of town. On the east side of town, there are other alternatives, different places where supporting vehicles can come from. On the west side of town, that's not the case. You know, to the west of us is the Everglades. Nobody's coming to help us from the Everglades. So there's some unique factors out there that are important for the, the health and safety of the residents out west to take into account. And I think it's important for everyone to understand that. And, and those, those are the most important points that I really wanted to make. I will say a couple other things. One is, when we did look out west for an appropriate place to put a location for the volunteers, you know, I had conversations with a number of residents there, and I, and I expressed the fact that, you know, we need to be fiscally conservative. We can't just spend to spend out there. We have to always have that balance. And there was a certain limit in my mind that I expressed to those individuals, that if we couldn't do it for under this particular number, then we're going to have to keep looking for other alternatives, because we do live, we do have to live under a budget. And, and to be honest with you, we've looked at a number of locations out there, and so far, none of them have come under that, that budget number. I do think that we, we all agree that the most important thing is to get that hardened station out west. And I agree with that. It needs to be out there, and frankly, it needs to be out there, you know, yesterday it needs to be out there. And we need to be able to devote as much money as we can to preparing to do that, because that's the long-term solution. There's no, there's no two ways about it. That's the long-term solution. And, you know, I've had, I've had many, many discussions with Chief Bennett, and, and I don't want to speak for him, but I think I've had this conversation with enough time, enough times with him that I think that, I think we're on the same page here, that, you know, that when that comes and that, that station gets out there, and we, we have more balanced service out there, we're going to have to look at what the, the contribution of the volunteer fire department. And see, I don't ever expect them to go away, because they're part of our town. But, you know, but that may affect their level of service in the town, because we, you know, it, the two are, are impactful, one for the other. So, so it is a fluid situation, but at the bottom line is that we have, you know, the health and safety of the residents out west need to be considered ultimately and in the highest order. I want to make one other comment. And I say this not as a council member up here. I say this as a resident of this town for over 20 years. When I moved out here over 20 years ago, I had a neighbor down my street. He was a fire chief down at the port. And he was a guy that was always there when I needed him. He was a guy that always spoke to me honestly, always was a man of integrity, and always was a man of quality. And we're fortunate to have that man as our, our volunteer fire chief right now. It's Lee Bennett, and, and I know he wouldn't get up there and say those things, but as a guy who has known him for close to 20 years, I felt the need to say it. He's a quality individual, and, and, and I think that needs to be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Counsel, any other additional questions, comments, or concerns?
Yeah. I just want to make a couple of quick questions, Stephen. I know where you're coming from, and, you know, sitting up here, I sit right next to 81. And I've had to use it. It was, I appreciate that. I know what you're saying, but I don't think the volunteer fire station out there is, is the answer, unless we get a better volunteer, more equipped, and we can do that. I think we need to see how we're going to cut that time down out there where you people are, because it's very important, because you're not as old as I am, but you go get there. And it's, it's important to me and my wife that I have it that close, and I appreciate it. And I'll do everything I can to help you get it closer to you are. I'm not so sure putting a volunteer fire station out there, in my personal opinion, is that answer. But I do know we need to do what we can to improve the time that it takes to get the safety for the people in our whole town. It's important.
Thank you, Freddie.
Mayor.
Doug?
Just one other thing to that. We have been looking for a location. We haven't stopped. The administrator's been with me on more than one occasion to stop and talk to a couple of people that have locations that might work for us. Ultimately, we might have to take the avenue of eminent domain. But in any case, let me say this. I believe the council up here is supportive that if we find a location that we can get that we think is going to work, I don't think any of us have a problem with floating them on and getting cheap money and getting that built and done. So I just want to mention that, that I think you guys would be on board if we had the right place to get that thing moving. So I think, we're not going to sit on our hands by any means if we get the right location.
And agree with, with everybody. Evaluating and assessing all the alternatives, including potentially some help with funding from Tallahassee. I know that we're coming up with some creative scenarios in pursuit of potentially a public safety building that's, that's needed here for a lot of the state agencies, as well as us for the shared concept. Gary?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Thank, thank you, everybody, for coming. I'd like to change course just a little bit, and I want to say thanks to Marty and Andy for a tremendous job they've done on a very, very, very thick book, where it has a lot of detail in it, and we know exactly where the money's going and how we're getting it. And I just want to say thank you, gentlemen. As I have said for the last couple of years, you guys have done an outstanding job.
And I ditto that, Gary. Again, we have a motion in a second to approve this, this item. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns, counsel? Seeing none, call a question, please. Russell?
Councilmember Breakers?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. And that concludes our second and final budget hearing. Accolades and congratulations to everybody on an outstanding job. And again, members of public, we appreciate you being here, and we value your input and, and feedback. That concludes the, the second budget hearing. With, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn, and I suspect it'll be unanimous.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm sure it's unanimous. The second budget hearing is hereby adjourned.
Mayor, we're going right to the local planning agency.
Breakers?
Here.
Councilmember McKay?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here. We all stand for the pledge, please.
Yes, right. Yes, you're correct. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Again, this is a meeting of the LPA and a quasi-judicial item.
Mayor, item three is a resolution. I'll read it in for Russell. A resolution of local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending that the town council amend the text of the future land use element of the town of Southwest Ranches comprehensive plan to establish an employment center, land use designation, with supporting objectives and policies to revise the list of permitted uses within the non-residential land use designations, and supporting objectives and policies, and to make revisions of a housekeeping nature, providing for an effective date. Mayor, on this item, Andy, who can chime in in a second, got requests from council members to table this item as items came up tonight that they believe should be reviewed by the comprehensive plan advisory board. So I'm turning it over to you, and if whoever sent those emails wants to table it, this was the time. If not, you can seek to continue.
Okay.
Thank you, Keith. Counsel?
I'll make a motion to table it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table. Steve, comment?
No, there's no, there's no comment.
Yeah, that's.
There's no legally, there's no comment on motion.
Don't appreciate that it was tabled and seconded before I could even speak a word.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll get it tabled and seconded if we're giving.
Freddie withdraws his second. And listen, see, we want everybody to have an opportunity to talk. Freddie withdrew the second. Steve, by all means.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I believe that this item needs to be spoken about tonight. If after the conversation, we decide that we want to table it, I'm okay, you know? I mean, I understand that. Personally, the way we've handled most of these issues in the past is we have, and we have passed it on first reading to get a zoning in progress in place, and then allowed debate conversations, you know? Maybe, maybe we had to wait 60 days, 90 days to bring it up again. And then we smoothed out everything that needed to be smoothed out in the second reading, passed it in second reading, and moved forward. And that's, that, I think, is how we normally do it. That is how I would prefer to do it here. I think that it's important, as we've done in the past, to get a zoning in progress in place, because, you know, this is a pretty hot topic, and the, the board, the comprehensive planning board worked pretty hard, along with staff, Jeff Cadams, to get this to us in front of us pretty quickly. So that would be, I think that's the appropriate way to handle it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. And again, you know, there's been some additional, and I'm not opening up new for argument or discussion right now, okay? Let's just see if we can get this reconciled up here. And I know what you're going to say, and I hear what you're going to say, and I'm not going to go out of order and, and not follow established protocol. But there are some things that have been, you know, that have come before. But there are some things that have been, you know, that have come before us that I suspect that all of you are aware of, and initially, quite frankly, I'm taking a look at that because I haven't had enough feedback. I haven't, it came at such a late time. I haven't had enough time, I've read it, to have my conversations with whomever to get feedback and confirmation about legitimacy of some of these concerns. So quite frankly, I'm not prepared. And one of the things that we always do, rely on our committees to do assessments and evaluations. So my first thought was, quite frankly, after taking a look at it, is to turn it back over to the comp planning board, evaluate some of these issues, and see what they can come up with. They might say that there isn't any validity, although in a brief conversation, a couple of the items do have some validity to them, and obviously, as a result of that, I think it's something that needs to be contemplated. But quite frankly, I'm not prepared tonight in light of what's been brought forward because I just don't have all the facts and all the information. But I'm certainly on board to make a suggestion to table it and send it back to the comp board ASAP to assess and evaluate and determine the validity, if there needs to be some revisions, if there is legitimacy to these concerns. It could be status quo, they might change things, I don't know. But again, rely on our committees to do that, and that's my feelings with regards to this new issue that just popped up, quite frankly, just a few hours ago, you know. So that's my feeling. Steve?
I actually, I do agree with you, Mayor, that I have also obviously read over that, those issues that have come in, and I do think that there are some legitimate reasons. I'm not, I don't want anyone to misinterpret what I'm saying, that, you know, I think that there are not legitimate reasons we need to steamroll this through. I think that, I think there are some positive things that, from those comments, that we may want to adjust what we're doing based on those comments. I think they're good, intelligent comments, you know, justifiable comments. However, I do think that it's important to, as I said, to kind of, to lay this in place to avoid a possibly a difficult situation, and then make those adjustments, give the board the time that it needs to go over it, and then make those corrections on second reading.
Mayor, if I may.
Doug?
Steve, normally, I'd probably agree with you, but under the circumstances with the, some of the discussions that were going on today, what this was about, they were going to appear and come, and they were told not to. So under those circumstances, yeah, so under those circumstances, I'm more on board with tabling it now than not because if they were able to be, they could have been here, but then we told them not to, so.
Well, I would be disappointed if that decision was basically taken out of our hands by someone else before we even arrived here.
Well, it's not taken out of our hands. We're more, I'm more on side with what the mayor's saying, is just send it back to the board to let it, give us time to chew, you know, chew it up and spit it out and see what comes out of it.
Right, I agree with that. I think it should go back to the board.
Okay. Again, you withdrew your second, Freddie. We did have a motion because we wanted to hear from Steve and what everybody else had to say.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So again, we have a motion?
I'll second.
Okay.
One thing, just for clarification. The comp plan board is meeting October 15th. I just asked Russell. Because of the fact that we always like to do for a time and date certain, is the council okay going to October 22nd, which is the next meeting after the comp plan board? Can they resolve this in one meeting?
Absolutely.
If so, do it October 22nd at 7:00 PM.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So no, you can't, Noel. No, I'm not going to sit here and debate it, and it's out of order. So again, we got a motion and a second to table with a time certain. The comp board is meeting again on the October 15th, and to bring this back before council on October the 22nd. Again, we have a motion to table, we have a motion and a second to table.
Okay, we're sorry. Councilmember Fisickelli made the motion, and it was seconded by?
He withdrew it, I seconded it.
Doug, it was, motion was made by council member?
Gary.
Yeah, by, that's right, you seconded it.
Okay.
So it was made, you made the, okay, you made the second. Who made the original motion? Freddie. Okay.
And I'll withdraw.
Okay. So let's just confirm, who made the motion and the second?
Yeah, we need a new.
Who made the motion?
I did, Freddie.
So he withdrew it.
You withdrew it?
Yeah.
Okay, so Steve had an opportunity to comment.
Right.
Okay, but the second time around, Doug, you made?
I thought he made it, and I seconded it.
Okay, all right, so take a choice. Make her the motion a second, make her the motion.
Yeah, I'll second the motion to table.
Okay, so Doug is the?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Doug made the motion, and Councilmember Jablonsky seconded it, just for the record. Sorry about that. Again, we have a motion and a second to table. Call a question, please. Russell.
Councilmember Brightcruz?
No.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisickelli?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, again, this was item number 10 on tonight's agenda.
Now, this was item three on the LPA.
Oh, I apologize. Item three on the, I'm sorry, Keith, thank you.
We now need to do item four, which is approval of the minutes, February 12th, 2015, local planning agency. Is there a motion to approve the?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve.
Yeah, we got more.
Any public comments on this, on this item?
I'm confused.
I'm confused too.
We're just approving the minutes of the February 12th, 2015, local planning agency. I think you're looking at the town council agenda.
Can I have just an agenda, the reflect what we're talking about? That would be great. The agenda I have is not to say that you guys refer to.
Yeah, I don't.
Thank you. Now I have.
I don't handle that.
Okay. Again, item number four, the approval of the amendments of the February 12th, 2014, local planning agency. Now that I have it, I understand it. And again, we have a motion and a second. Russell, call a question, please.
Councilmember Brightcruz?
Do they not have this?
Councilmember Brightcruz?
You know what, I'm not going to vote on something if I don't even see it, all right? Somebody needs, this is not clear to me what's going on here. Where are we?
I got it.
Sure.
Apparently, it's missing. Apparently, it's missing.
Yes. Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisickelli?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Again, item number three has been tabled, item number four has been approved, minutes for the February 12th, 2015, local planning agency. I believe that that concludes the items for the LPA. Okay, now let me make sure that I go to the next agenda, and that's right.
Motion to adjourn.
I got a motion to adjourn, and I'm sure that it is unanimous, seeing that there is no more business to conduct as the LPA. Okay, going into the regular agenda, under item number three, quasi-judicial hearing.
Mayor, let's call the regular agenda meeting to order, and let's have Russell just do the roll call for the record.
You are absolutely correct, Keith. Again, we're going to call the regular meeting to order. Call the roll, please, Russell.
Councilmember Brightcruz?
Here.
Councilmember McKay?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fisickelli?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here. We all stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, the third item on the agenda is a delegation request that was tabled for additional information in the council. I'm going to have Russell read it into the record, and I will advise where we're at.
Mayor, this is a consideration of delegation request application number DE-19-15 to amend or eliminate various conditions of approval of the tariff plat, as recorded in plat book 162, page 20 of the Broward County, Florida, public records. The requested amendments include modification of the non-vehicular access lines and deletion of requirements to pave a portion of Southwest 184th Avenue, construct turn lanes, construct sidewalks, provide financial surety for a traffic signal, and related requirements. Akai Estates LLC owner, Shwebki Shishkin and Associates, Inc., petitioner. The property is generally located at the southwest corner of Griffin Road and unimproved 184th Avenue. This item was tabled from the August 27th, 2015 meeting.
Mayor, all witnesses in this matter were previously sworn in. The council tabled this item as a direct reaction to the turn lane off of Griffin Road to 185th. It was essentially a U-turn to get to the development. The council asked the applicant to look at an alternative means of accessing the site. One was potentially working with the landscape nursery to bifurcate their site to gain access that way. Another means was to try to work with the church to get access through the church site. Upon analysis, further analysis by the town staff, the applicant, and Broward County engineering, it was determined that there was sufficient right-of-way between the church site and Griffin Road to provide a dual-access lane that would be a direct turn from Griffin Road into this dual-access lane, which would have a direct entrance and exit to the development. So the applicant is here tonight to amend its plat note, its delegation request, to propose the two-lane instead of the prior entrance. Jeff Cadems from staff is here, and I believe he may have a presentation to show you how it would work. Well, actually, I guess not. He's shaking his head no. But this is it for the residents. The existing canal of 184th is, is that for the council? I believe the council all has the exhibit, and there's two extra ones here as well. John Tello is here from the applicant who previously been sworn in, so is the owners of Akai. I just think that they may just want to walk you through how the county has approved the change, and then it will be back before you for deliberation and to make a final determination. Again, the point of the hearing is, it's at the council stage at this time. Alex?
Yes, good evening, everybody. We're relying on, I guess Jeff was going to have a presentation or something, so we don't have anything besides what's on the screen. Once again, I mean, it's another attempt in trying to basically have access into a property. We do not have access as we speak. It's not our favorite way to access our property, but it's a way that we can actually live with, and hopefully have the residents and the council members happy with this alternative.
Mayor, council, it's in your hands for deliberation. If you have any questions of the applicant, or of staff, or of legal or anyone else, we're happy to answer, but it's for you for determination. There is no motion on the table at this time.
I'd like to jump in here if I could, Mayor.
Absolutely, Gary.
Yeah, the developer's gone back, and he's not, he's not a winner in this, and it wasn't exactly what he wanted, but it satisfies our requirements of no U-turn, and it gives him access to the property, and I'm kind of glad to see all of that. So, you know, based on that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this.
I'll second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Just a comment, too, with regards to this whole process. We appreciate, you know, your patience and recognizing some of the significant issues that have happened out there that involved our residents and others, and the concerns that this council had as a result of this U-turn. You listened, you paid attention, and while it's not an alternative that you 100% support, you recognize it and realize the importance of it, why we recommended it, and going along with this newest result moving forward for access to your property. I just want to recognize and thank you first and foremost. I know Keith worked hard, Andy worked hard. Thanks to Broward County in reconciling this, reconciling the concerns as a direct result of some of the issues that we had out there on Griffin Road. But we thank you very, very much. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Really just want to echo the comments you just made, to be honest with you. I, you know, this, I think, is a real testament to showing that the process works, that, you know, you came with a good plan, but it wasn't really right for that community in that place, and took into account the residents and their feedback, went back, worked with staff, worked with the legal, worked with everybody, you know, and put together a much better plan here. I think one that's going to be safer for the community out there, will not add to the traffic issues that are already pretty significant out there. And I just wanted to also thank you for your willingness to work together to come up with a real positive solution here. I think this is a great, great solution for that area out there. I wish you the best of luck as you develop that area. It's been waiting a long time to be developed, so congratulations and best of luck.
Mayor? Thank you, Steve. Doug?
Maybe, I know it's not, like you said, the best alternative, but I'll ditto what everybody else said about working with us and cooperating, and, you know, we know we need to get you access and stuff, and hopefully, with any luck, maybe you can acquire the church property and make that part of the rest of your development.
I got a quick question to make sure I understand it. What you're going to do now, you're going to come off of 184th Avenue going south, if you're going, saying you're coming off of 84th Avenue, you're going south. You're going to proceed all the way across Griffin, and you're going to make a left turn there to go into the road to go west. Is that correct?
Which direction are you coming from?
I'm coming from Weston, on 184th Avenue, and I want to enter the project. I'm going to cross all the way at the red light?
No.
No.
You know where the U-turn was before? Where the U-turn was before? It's a left turn.
Go ahead, what you saying?
I mean, go ahead, John. You're coming from Weston, you'll make a right onto Griffin Road?
That's correct. It's, Onaventure Boulevard lines up with, 184th was proposed for 184th.
I'm going to go all the way across all four lanes of Griffin Road?
No, no, no.
That's what I'm asking. I understand that, Andy. I want to make sure they understand what I'm saying.
Griffin and Onaventure right here.
Right.
So which way are you coming from?
Weston. I'm coming from the north, I'm going south.
You're going south, so you're going to make a right onto Griffin Road, and basically you're going to go past the property and make a left into 185th.
Okay, that's what I asked. Okay, thank you.
It's 185th.
Yeah, 185th. Okay, council, any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Again, we got a motion and a second to approve. Russell, call a question, please.
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisickelli?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Thank you, guys. Welcome, and appreciate you working with us. Very, very much.
Thank you, guys, we appreciate your work, and hopefully, we're going to do something good for the town, so.
We look forward to it. Thank you. All right, item number four, public comment.
Mayor, the rules are in the agenda, three minutes per speaker. We have four speakers tonight. Some may have signed up thinking it was during the budget, so if you don't want to speak, just say, Barry Nunzick wanted to speak on fire department, John Eastman wanted to speak on fire department, Jim Lasky, and Kathy Braun.
Good evening, gentlemen. Barry Nunzick, 163rd and Sterling. First, Mr. Brightcruz, I need to correct you. The number that you used for response time, the four-minute response time, that is for urban fire department, such as city of Miami or some other big city, is not for a rural or suburban, which would allow a greater response time. Now, I do agree that we would like to have our response times as short as possible. That's why I advocated, and still do, for stations somewhere around the 190s, to get the response times down. You guys have this misconception with the volunteers, especially when it comes to medical, that they're going to be able to do everything that Davy does, and it's just not true. Think if you have a heart attack, that the volunteers are going to get out there and provide you with a real great service. Well, they really can't, okay? They can't start an IV for you, they can't give you lidocaine, they can't give you atropine if that's what's called for, depending on what your heart's going. medical, that they're going to be able to do everything that Davy does, and it's just not true. Think if you have a heart attack, that the volunteers are going to get out there and provide you with a real great service. Well, they really can't. They can't start an IV for you. They can't give you lidocaine. They can't give you atropine, if that's what's called for, depending on what your heart's going. If you're hypo, you need atropine. If you've got PVCs, you need lidocaine. They just can't do that for you. You're going to have to wait for another Davy crew to get there, or you're going to have to wait for Weston to get there, the BSO out of Weston. That's just the facts of it. Okay? If Lee Bennett tells you anything else, or any of the volunteers tell you anything else, they are lying to you. That's all there is to it. That's a fact. They don't carry the equipment. Now, at one time, the volunteers had a rescue truck. They sold it. They went to transport. Would have been nice if they would have kept it, just for crazy transport. If something crazy happened, and you just needed transport because nothing else was available, they didn't do that. You volunteers, you guys think they're going to give you this service that they're not going to give you, especially on medical rescue. And that's where most of your calls are, and that's where most of your life and death is, is on that. You know, if your barn burns down, I don't care if my barn burns down. It's a barn. Rebuild it. You're not right, Freddie. Barn burns down, you can rebuild them. You know that. It's your medical call. It's when your wife is sick, and they come in there, and they need to start an IV. When those people came to your house, Freddie, that wasn't the volunteers. They might have been there, but they didn't do the work. Davy did the work. Davy has the drugs. Davy has the equipment. The volunteers don't have that equipment. For all you people that think the volunteers have that equipment, I'm sorry to tell you, they don't have that equipment. And for all you people that want to keep the money in this town for the volunteers, out of all of the volunteers, there are seven, including Lee Bennett, that are volunteers that live in this town. Out of all of those, there is one that's a paramedic. That's what your volunteers are. Okay? They're probably great people. I have, I don't know. They're probably great people. It's just, it's a service that you're not, that you're depending on, and you're not going to get what you think you're going to get. And it may cost you your life, and I'm sorry about that. Let's get the station to 192, thereabouts, so that you can have better response times and give the citizens what they need.
John Eastman. John, did you want to speak? Then again, Jim Lasky, Gabe...
Just more on the fire department. Jim's right on target about this new fire truck. You know, you're buying a lemon right off the bat here. And, you know, this company's under litigation for many people that have bought these trucks, and why are we getting involved in that? I mean, put this thing on hold, and let's reconsider it. You know, I don't know the exact number, but I think it's probably 95% of the calls are medical-related. So, that's where the business is, you know, and why do we need a fire truck? You know, if we've had all these medical calls, then that should be the concentration on life-saving. Fire trucks are easy to come by. We can put mutual aid in. We can call Davy from the east. We've had a couple house fires out here in the last few years I've lived here. They've never saved the houses. I mean, they're usually lightning strikes in the middle of the day. You all know that. So, we don't have fires. And when we do, it's just an isolated, it's either a barn or a house. Nothing is close because we're so spread out. We don't have any two-story. We don't have any multi-unit housing. So, the business with the fire rescue is in the rescue, and that's where the concentration and the money needs to be spent. And Steve is right. You know, there is a hole out west, seven or eight minutes, but fortunately, not that many people live out there. No consolation to them, but, you know, we're, I think things are pretty balanced now, but we can certainly improve it by building a hardened station to around 190. That's going to at least save two to three minutes off of that western response time. Let's just keep working on it. The issue's not going away. You know, I think everybody wants to do the right thing here, but, you know, to be putting money into this fire truck, it's the wrong truck. Just because you're getting a deal on it, it's not going to be a deal when the thing is laid up, you know, half the month, and you can't get service on it because the company's out of business, and you end up having to sue them. Anyway, please reconsider it, and let's spend that money on that new station. And, you know, I'm not saying the volunteers have to go away. I just don't want my tax money being spent on two fire departments. You know, if they have some mission that you can come up with, where they're actually pulling their weight, then, you know, show it to me, and I'll be more than happy to go along with it. But nobody has done that. I've asked Chief Bennett to come to our HOA meeting many times, and please, give us your plan, chief, and he's never come and done that. He's done a couple of...
I have to take a step.
Yeah, stop, 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 stop. You're out of order. Stop.
And when I say that, I mean specific. He's come and addressed this many times. He's bantered with Barry back and forth on a few issues. But when it comes right down to it, there still isn't a plan. What is the mission of that department? They can't do medical. We don't really have any fires, so what is the point? And now, we're putting money, quarter million dollars into a truck that's a lemon. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Braun was actually third, then Jim. Kathy, did, is Kathy still want to speak, or it was on the item that was already approved anyway? Okay, no problem. Jim Lasky, and then final speaker is Gabe Chappals. Thank you, Kathy.
Jim, you're up.
Jim, you're up.
Okay, I'll get back on the case. All right, Oshkosh went up 1,157%, okay? And it's a $2.86 billion company, so I would imagine there's a little room for a problem with warranties, which there doesn't seem to be a lot of problems with warranties. But anyway, getting back on what these guys have been saying, there's truth in everything that they said. You've got basically two teams with two head coaches and two administrations. What you want to do is you want to have one coach, okay? Maybe you want to have a medical director that has volunteered, who is a real medical director, an accomplished medical director, be able to triage all the calls. Because with a few questions, the right questions, he can assess the immediate danger you've got there. Then you can allocate resources without having to duplicate resources. This is something that was pointed out in the Matrix study, which I first told you guys about, I think, in April. I don't think anybody's read it. Would anybody like to refute any of the information on there? That's exactly what they talked about for saving a bunch of money in Lauderdale by the Sea. Lauderdale by the Sea has the lowest fire fees anywhere. Does anybody understand that? They didn't look bad on their mileage rate, if you notice that. They're among the best. So is Weston. The more you have invested in your community, the less problems you're going to have with the inner-city issues that cause everybody's emergency services and police protections to go sky-high. We don't have that here. We've got people that value this town, value probably their health to a great extent, and you heard them talking about it right now. Why don't we get smart about this? There is so much medical technology out there that it's ridiculous for us not to be utilizing it. Since the stroke protocol was changed three days after I complained about it, the fire board meeting, has anybody allowed our volunteers, or Davy as a matter of policy, to utilize FaceTime? What does FaceTime do? It allows a stroke intervention guy over in Memorial Hospital to insert a catheter up into your brain and remove a clot. And when I complained was after Miramar got to it first, with our medical director, Dr. Avery, I want to say. Anyway, I think that we have a more, need to have a more dedicated approach to get our people that kind of treatment rapido, rather than screw around with policies and unions and everything else. We could be a lot better with a lot less money overall, and make everybody happy. Barry's perfectly capable of putting a lot of positive input. John Eastman is capable. That fellow, Chris Walton over there, he's a trainer. He can train you how to do all this stuff. If we don't have him for a trainer, we got a medical director that'll finish the job. What can I tell you? It makes too much sense for you guys to ignore it, and that's why I say you need more diversity, and you'll make better decisions. Thank you.
Final speaker, Gabe Chappals.
Gabe Chappals, I was asked by a resident to bring up the fact that a lot of these lawn maintenance trucks are parking in the middle of the street, and they're not in the easement. They're in the middle of the road, and sometimes there's two or three, and you can't get by. I've been over in Sunshine Ranches, where this gentleman lives, and I can vouch for it. I don't know what the town can do, but I think that these are places where they can pull in, Sunshine Ranches is two and a half acres or more, they can pull in and maintain the property and not be parked in the road. And he asked me to bring it up to you all, so that maybe you can address it. So, that's what I'm doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. All right, that concludes public comment. Item number five, board reports. Any board members here? Newell?
Newell Hollingsworth, Chair of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board. Since the planning council refused to allow comment as to this 12-hour email from Bergeron Properties and Investments, which is nothing but bunk, all of these issues have already been discussed in the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board. If you want to give me more time, I'll go through each one of them right now. But when we started this process several years ago, and we were looking at five different sites for commercial properties, of which four of them the council rejected, we asked all of the property owners, including Bergeron, to come forth with any suggestions, considerations, or thoughts. Now, the property owners on Flamingo Road came forth. The property owners that were on Griffin Road came forth. The property owners on Sheridan came forth. But Bergeron did not. Not at all. Not a word. Not a peep. Nothing. Zero, zero. Nada. When this came before the council for the first reading some long months ago, before it got tied up in this water and sewer thing, was he here to put this forward then? No. And you passed it. But it expired because of the one policy, 1.17B, which had the water and sewer in it. We removed that and resubmitted it to this council for the simple reason we wanted zoning in progress, because there is a lot of activity right now out west on that property. Surveys, et cetera. There's also rumors flying left and right about what he wants to build there. None of which he will be able to do if you pass this with zoning in progress before he files anything with this town. That is why it was imperative that it be passed this evening. What you have done is allowed him another month to put some Shylock plans together, which are entirely different than what we want, but will supplement his Bergeron Park of Commerce property. And he says it right here. Warehouses, light industrial, not heavy manufacturing, is what is in this light industrial that he wants. Warehouses that are higher than what we set, and we were looking at the line of sight when we were talking about this, and we spent a lot of time on this. That is why the height is what it is. We have so much that we have accomplished in this, and you basically said tonight, he comes in at 5:00 this afternoon and wham! He gets what he wants, a delay. No. You should have discussed it completely before. You are in error this evening for not putting zoning in progress. If he puts something forward in the next month, you have no choice. No choice whatsoever. Because if he does the same thing as Cocina Plaza, which is our only commercial designation, that is what he'll do. It is not what we want in this town, is another Cocina Plaza-style operation. We wanted an employment center, not light industrial, not heavy warehouses, not semi-trucks staying overnight, loading and unloading all night. No, that is not what we wanted. That is what Bergeron Park of Commerce wants. Not the comprehensive plan, not this town, and not the individuals that came out and talked to us at that time. You have made an error this evening. We will take a look at it and go over it again at our next meeting. It'll be on the agenda if he wants to show up at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members? Any comments? Any other board members? See, and that concludes item number five. Item number six, council member comments. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of comments. The, I wanted to just let everybody know that, well, I mentioned it a while back, but just to follow up, that a while back, Andy and I went to visit the folks at Broward County Schools regarding buses out west and getting bus stops out there specifically along 188th, 185th, 186th, where, and really all the areas out there. But, you know, it's a difficult area. It's very close to the middle school there, Silver Trails, and the buses kind of drive right by there. And it would be very good if they would be able to get a couple bus stops there to pick up the kids, so that they don't have to cross over Sheridan Boulevard to get to the school. We had a pretty good conversation with them. I think they explained to us what they could do and what they couldn't do. A lot of it does come down to the math of what the capacity of the buses, and how that all plays out once the school year begins. And they told us that they will not make changes in the first several weeks of the school year, but around October 1st, come back and talk to us, and by then, we can make updates. So, I know Andy is working to make that conversation now that we're approaching October 1st. So, hopefully, we'll have some, at least feedback, maybe some good news on that. Against my better judgment, I am going to make one more comment about the volunteer fire department, just because I heard a couple things there, and I just kind of want to respond. One is, you know, the regulation I read, I don't really remember seeing anything versus rural, versus suburban, versus urban, but I know Barry knows his stuff, so I will defer to him on that. Stand corrected. But I will also say that, you know what, I don't really care where I live, whether I live in a rural area. My body doesn't really care, you know? If I need the service, I need the service, and I need it. I need it now. So, and then one other comment about ALS or BLS. It's the, there is, it's true that we don't have on the volunteer equipment, the ALS equipment, to be able to provide ALS. He's accurate in saying that. However, the vast majority of the staff in the volunteer department is certified and qualified to do ALS. And in more than one occasion, they have done ALS when it's been needed and when Davy is there with the equipment. So, they have been able to do that. But I don't want to minimize BLS either, because BLS provides, in many cases, the initial life support necessities, getting the breathing restarted, getting the heart restarted, those sort of things that obviously are extremely critical. That's all part of BLS. So, BLS is extremely important, and they also obviously are all certified on that and provide that service. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. Any other council member? Commissary?
Yeah.
Freddie?
What happens? You get up here, and you say something, and I guess people just misunderstand what I said. And what it involved was, I don't know if it was the last meeting, meeting before that, I asked Chief Bennett about a brush truck. What my comment was, they're asking for a new truck, a big truck, just like the other truck. And I'm not really in favor of that truck, because they have primarily been brush trucks ever since I've been here. That's what they have done when we had that, and it looks like they're going to lose that. That was the only reason I brought that up, because I wasn't saying I wanted to go buy a brush truck, which the people are accusing me of. All it says is, I thought that the primary reason for the volunteer fire department was brush fires. Now, maybe it isn't. Maybe that was my opinion when I first got here. Maybe it's different. But that was the reason I said what I did say about the truck. I wasn't, I wasn't by no means saying, John, that I want them to go out and buy another truck. I just said that if you buy that truck you're talking about, you're not going to be able to be a brush truck, which we really thought that, with my opinion, what we really did. That's my, that's all I got.
Thank you, Freddie Gary.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming. It's a couple...
A couple of public service announcements, and I have a comment I'd like to make. The Mobile Drivers License Bureau of Car Registration is going to be at Town Hall on the 22nd of October, it'll be here from like 9:00 to 3:00. And I want to mention a really, really good service that we have at the barn Saturday on the 10th, is the hazardous materials pickup and shredding, document shredding. I encourage everybody to use that, it's a good way to recycle products. We have our Country Roads Craft Fair on the 17th of October, it's a very busy month, from 10:00 to 4:00. We also have poker night at Land Lovers for the Education Advisory Board on the 15th at 7:00 PM, and I do think they serve alcoholic beverages, but I'm not 100% on that. 31st is Halloween at the barn, sponsored by Roca, the whole town is invited, and anybody who wants to donate candy, feel free to do so, drop it off at my doorstep, I'll find a good use for it. And I'm sure Andy's going to talk about more about the town birthday party on the 7th, if I got that date right, Andy, in November. And the Parks Foundation is having a car show at the barn on the 14th of November. I encourage everybody to come, it's going to be a lot of fun. And I believe that's the one, the birthday party is where we're doing the duck tank.
No, the 14th, the car show.
Okay, the car shows, whatever it is, I'm probably going to get that, so, a lot. Because I have a smart mouth, I'm sure I'll draw a lot of money, I hope, for that. That aside, I'd like to make a couple comments on the volunteer fire department. How do you put a value on a life? That's what all of us up here have to decide. It's pretty easy to be out there, I remember I used to be out there, and I could put a value on it back then. Up here, when you've got to make the decision, it's not so easy. And the fire study that we commissioned, that we spent $30,000, $40,000 on, basically came up with, we're not covered out west, and the volunteers help us do that. And I don't ever want to be in a position where I, we lost a life because we defunded a program that we could have easily kept going. Soon, we're going to be looking at putting in a permanent fire station out west, maybe we want to do another fire study once we've done that and we ascertain the coverage areas, something like that. But until that point, I'm not willing to risk gambling with our residents' lives out west, any way, shape, or form. You don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, you don't know what's going to happen six months from now, and you really don't know what's going to happen a year from now. And you only need one call to make that work. And I remember a story that was told to me, and there's a lot of airline pilots out there, and I remember an airline pilot that I knew in my day job, and he was telling me about a harrowing experience that he had landing a large jet at Miami International, and I forgot, this is years ago, and the flaps were stuck, or something, something went wrong really bad, and he was able to get the plane down and all the passengers, and he said, I just wanted everybody to know I earned my paycheck for my lifetime with that one shot. So you never know where or when something's going to happen, and there's no such thing as under coverage, you know, we need to over-cover when a life is concerned. So I just wanted to make that mention, and I'll wrap up with that.
So I'm just responding to some of my staff members out at Cypress, we got a major leak, I just have to real, real...
Are we winning?
We are winning, we are making progress. We are making progress. Okay, that concludes item number seven, council member comments, item number, I'm sorry, six, item number seven, legal comments. Keith?
Sure, Mayor. Andy and I participated in conflict resolution with Pembroke Pines...
Yeah, exactly.
With Pembroke Pines this week, or last week?
Last Thursday.
Last Thursday? Don't even remember anymore. That was the item where Pembroke Pines has announced that they plan to file a lawsuit against the town of Southwest Ranches for the town's request to have conflict resolution with them, which they turned us down, and our opposition, the Franklin Academy of School. They've demanded that the town pay them $600,000 or that they're going to sue us. Andy said, thank you very much for the information, we will bring it back before the council. If the council chooses tonight not to pay $600,000, which is fully within your prerogative, they have scheduled a, on their own actually, this is a funny story, I might as well just tell everyone, that the meeting went like this, our clerks will get together and schedule a date and time for a joint meeting between the town of Southwest Ranches and Pembroke Pines, in which both commissions can talk about this matter. We left the meeting, and today we got a notice of advertisement saying that the meeting's been set on October 13th, 2015 at 5:00 PM, so hopefully all of you are available for that. So we thank them for telling us and sending us a copy of the advertisement. So that is open to the public, I welcome everyone to attend that meeting, you know, and at some point, I'd like to have a meeting with the council, open to the public as well, to discuss how that meeting will be conducted, to refresh your recollection on how those sort of meetings occur. So Andy, I don't know if, we originally spoke about doing it before this meeting, but, you know, whatever the availability of the council, now that they set it at 5:00, it's pretty early evening to try to get a meeting before then, so we have to maybe pick another date before then to speak. So that was item one that I just wanted to mention. Item two, similarly dealing with Pembroke Pines, we got a meeting from their legal, an email from their legal counsel today advising that the concrete barricades on 54th would be fully removed by the end of the week. Again, what it appears that Pines will be doing in agreement essentially, or they would never want to say agreement, so, in response to the litigation with the town, they will be removing the barricades, but they will be building their own 54th, which I guess will be like a Harry Potter 54th and a Half Street, in which they are going to be constructing an additional lane to where their new 54th is constructed, then they're going to put ballards down between the old 54th and the new 54th to prevent anyone from Southwest Ranches being able to drive on their new 54th. So just giving you a heads up, the concrete barricades will be removed at the end of the week, and a new 54th and a Half will be under construction from Pines. No joke, I know you're all laughing, but this is all real serious. So those are the Pembroke Pines items that are occurring today. Since that last meeting, we've also had our annual legislative meeting, we've gone over the town's pet projects with Nelson Diaz from Southern Strategies, Emily is busy working on the books to give him for the legislators, and they feel very comfortable that they are going to get our projects back in the budget this year. Most imperative will be finishing the guardrail on Sterling Road, a lot of you know we had another incident on Sterling Road this past week, and so it's even more imperative now to finish off the guardrail project. So the legislature will be considering that soon. Final thing I just wanted to bring up is that Andy, myself, and Cleat met with Broward County Environmental, and I don't know if I'm raining on Andy's parade to bring this up, but they said the drought of us having to go to them for every time fill occurs in the town of Southwest Ranches potentially could be over, in that they would give us back our home rule jurisdiction on those items, provided that we buy the same software that the county has to determine whether or not a property can be filled without getting a wetland determination letter. And I know that Andy and Russell and everyone else has been trying to put the price together for that software, and then it will be a policy decision of the town council, whether or not you want to make that expenditure and take that operation in-house for residents, or whether or not you want to leave it with the county. So that's a brief legal update. Andy?
He's turning it over to you, Andy.
Just wanted your blessing, Mayor, before I started.
That concludes item number seven. Item number eight, administration comments.
Yeah, thank you. Just to jump on Keith's last comments, the meeting with the county went very well. The software that they have, that Keith was referring to, is GIS software, and it is something that staff had begun to look at previously, because there are a lot of other, I'll say, other uses, other applications and value to the town, so we had begun to evaluate that previously. This is just one more use that just may sweeten the pot enough to justify the expense. I don't have those numbers at this time to share with you, we are working on those. But there's certainly multiple benefits to the town in the purchase of that software, not just the wetlands determination. Just a couple other things, Mayor, if I will, this will be our last, I think, hopefully Tuesday meeting, at least for this year, because we combine the council meetings on the night of our public budget hearings. We are forbidden from having those meetings on the same nights as the county, or the school board, or the hospital district, or other taxing authorities. And between that and the Jewish holidays that fall in September, we wind up really trying to maybe mix and match and pick the dates where we can best get together so that we can have the budget meeting in conjunction with the council meeting. So effective October, we go back to our second and fourth Thursday night. Because of the way the calendar falls, we'll be back here again next week on Thursday night for another council meeting, for our normal first meeting in October. Certainly given what we've been through tonight, there's, I would say the agenda will probably be a little bit lighter for that meeting, but we will be back here again next Thursday night for that meeting. Prior to that meeting at 6:00, we'll have somebody here from BSO who will do a presentation for us on flakka and other synthetic drugs. I think the timing is really good in advance of Halloween, because, I mean, you've seen some of the stories on the news of people who are just kind of losing their mind and doing all kinds of crazy things, but have you seen the way some of that candy comes packaged, in lollipops and other things, suckers, it's just perfectly wrapped, and it's in sealed plastic bags? I mean, it looks like the kind of bag that you could very easily pick up, not that you're going to run into that at Publix, but you could pick up that bag, you wouldn't think anything of it, it looks like perfectly appropriate candy that you might give out for Halloween or some other circumstance. So I think it's going to be very helpful, very useful information for people to see. I don't think a lot of people realize just how those things are being marketed to children, and how professionally they're being packaged and sealed. So it's not, you know, it's not like the old days where you're, you know, in the back corner on the street, you know, buying something off the street. Some of this stuff is very, very professionally presented and incredibly harmful. So the more we can spread the word to our residents on what's out there, and as I said in advance of Halloween, and just general knowledge, I think that's going to be a very big plus. So that'll be at 6:00, the council meeting will be at 7:00. And last but not least, I want to just invite you all, council, residents, staff, certainly anybody who's listening, to the town's birthday party on November 7th from 11:00 to 3:00, that'll be out at the Rolling Oaks Barn. We're going to have music, we're going to have, you know, all kinds of entertainment and food, and it's just going to be a fun time had by all. So we look forward to having you out there for that event. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Andy.
Andy, one quick question. Where did we ever get the information on the yellow dots? My wife's still asking me.
We have not gotten it yet, but I'm pleased to tell you that Vice Mayor Carr was actually successful, although the check was cut that you guys approved that night, it was approved, it's on my desk, Vice Mayor Carr was so impressed, his colleagues on the Broward County Commission, that they've actually agreed to fund it and have given him the go-ahead. So I've made it very clear to him, you know, Marty knows, certainly as soon as those things are ready, we're looking for our share, and we'll distribute them as soon as they have them printed. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Andy. Item number nine, ordinance for the second reading.
This is an ordinance of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending Article 40 telecommunications towers and antennas of the land development code, providing for severability, repealer, codification, and an effective date.
Mayor, this is the item that updates your code to bring it in line with the current regulations concerning telecom, which is mainly federal law. I noticed again tonight, the ordinance still has some blanks on when it was read on first reading, second reading, we're going to clean that up before it gets codified in the town's code, but it's here for you for a second reading, it comes to you with unanimous approval on first reading.
Thank you, Keith. Again, we approved this on first reading, September 15, 2000, this year, obviously. Thank you for that, Keith. Council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Again, council, we have a motion to second approve. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, call the question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, again, item 10 has been tabled, item number...
Actually, Mayor, for the record, if we could just get ready to the record, and then a motion to table it to October 22nd at 7:00 PM, so that it's in line with the prior item.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve, again, for a time certain, October 22nd, is that the meeting it's scheduled for? Okay. Again, this is tabled. And the public comment on this item, seeing Bob?
No.
No public comment, it's a tabled item, I'm sorry, Bob, I apologize, I'm out of order. Can we, a motion to second to table, time certain, again, October 22nd, call the question, please, Russell.
I need to first read the title. It's an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the text of the future land use element of the town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan, establishing an employment center land use designation with supporting objectives and policies, revising the list of permitted uses within non-residential land use designations, and supporting objectives and policies, and making revisions of a housekeeping nature, providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency, providing for recertification by the Broward County Planning Council, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Again, I got ahead of my self, I apologize, thank you for reading it for the record. Again, we've got a motion to second to table, time certain, October 22nd. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns, council? Seeing none, Russell, call the question, please.
Councilmember Breckus?
Because this hasn't been approved by the LPA, I'll say yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number 11.
Mayor, items 11 and 12 deal with the Tisdor Project for roadway improvements on both 205 and 209th Avenue. I'll have Russell read them both into the record.
Excuse me. A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement with weekly asphalt paving for construction of Phase 1 of the transportation surface and drainage ongoing rehabilitation, also known as Tisdor, roadway improvements for Southwest 205th Avenue, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute the agreement and providing an effective date. Item 12 is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement with weekly asphalt paving for construction of Phase 1 of the transportation surface and drainage ongoing rehabilitation, or Tisdor roadway improvements for Southwest 209th Avenue, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Item number 11, council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second to approve. Any members of public wish to comment on this item? See no public comment, public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion to second to approve. Any additional questions or comments or concerns, council? Seeing none, Russell, call the question, please.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 12, council, motion?
Item 12.
Item 12.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve. Any members of public wish to comment on this item? Why not, Michael?
I just want to answer a question. When you approved 205...
On the mic, please.
Mike Hanley, 205 Avenue, when you approved the paving of 205, does that mean that the speed bumps will or will not be included? Did you get the resolution on the speed bumps, and what's the consensus?
I'll answer that as soon as the time's over.
Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion in a second to approve. Steve, you're going to clarify that.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, actually, thanks, Mike. No, the speed bumps will still remain there, that was how the voting for 205 came out, so voted the majority to retain them there, so they will remain there. They will get paved, but they will remain.
Thank you, Steve. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns, council? Seeing none, again, we've got a motion to second to approve. Call the question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item 13.
Mayor, item number 13 is to contract with weekly paving, asphalt paving, to install the Sterling Road guardrails. This goes back to the appropriation from the state and the funding from the state. Russell?
Thank you, Keith.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second to approve. Any members of public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Again, motion to second approve. Counsel, any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, call the question, please, Russell.
First need to read the resolution.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Getting way ahead of it. Sorry, I apologize.
It's okay. A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement with Weekly Asphalt Paving, Inc., to complete the Sterling Road Guardrail Improvements Project, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell, for the record. Again, we have a motion in a second to approve. Seeing no additional comments or concerns, Russell, call the question, please.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number 14, which is approval of the minutes for the August 27, 2015, regular Town Council meeting, September 3, 2015, executive session meeting, and the September 3, 2015, special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. I know that our residents do read the minutes. Turn it over to you all for any public comment, any corrections, any concerns.